Item number one is our invocation by Pastor Trent Eastman of New Baptist Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Todd Sweeney from District Two. At this time, I'd ask for you to rise and silence yourself, Enz.
Let's pray. Gracious Father, I thank you for tonight. I thank you for those who are gathered here this evening. I thank you for them taking the time and the energy and the effort to seek the welfare of the city, Father. I pray that you give them courage and patience and wisdom during tonight and the days ahead. And I pray for the city. I lift up Huntington to you. I ask your hand of well-being and protection and safety upon the city, Father. May the proceedings tonight go according to your purposes, Father. And again, I'm grateful for you and those who serve this city, Father, in powerful ways. We thank you, in Christ's name, amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Atkins, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Bowen?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Mount?
Here.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Present.
Mr. Shockley?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
And Ms. Walling?
Present.
All right, we do have a quorum. In front of you, item number three, synopsis of the last meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the synopsis is approved. Item number four, reports to the mayor. Mayor Williams?
Welcome.
Ma'am, just a few, just a few quick items. You're invited to, council members, you are invited to a hiring ceremony for two new probationary police officers with the Huntington Police Department at eleven, eleven-thirty a.m., Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, in the municipal courtroom at the police department, six seventy-five Tenth Street. This is tomorrow. Secondly, Phil Watkins will be recognized at the Huntington Police Department with the ceremony at four p.m. on Thursday, the twenty-seventh, to recognize Deputy Chief Watkins on his more recent appointment. The ceremony will take place at the Mountain Health Arena Conference Center, again, on Thursday, the twenty-seventh, at four p.m. And lastly, Jan Raiders' Fire Department Retirement Ceremony will be held and hosted by the Fire Department from two to four p.m. on Wednesday, February ninth, at Centennial Fire Station Number One, located at the corner of Seventh Avenue and Ninth Street. This event will take place in the bay of the station. To allow for social distancing and face coverings will be required. Parking is available in the CSX parking lot, next to the bay doors on the street, and in the parking lot on the west side of the station. And that's it.
All right. Any questions for the mayor? All right, thank you, Mayor Williams. Item number five, Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash R dash nine-six. Ms. Atkins?
A resolution of council confirming the mayor's appointment of Lisa Riley to the City of Huntington Land Bank Fast Track authority.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Jackson and a second from Councilman Bowen. This had gone through Personnel Committee. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. Personnel Committee did meet and forward it to full council with a favorable recommendation.
All right. Do we have any questions from the council? Anyone from the public on this item? All right. Ms. Atkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
It's a resolution.
Resolution, call for a vote.
You can do either way, right?
Roll call.
Prefer roll call. You don't have to do roll call?
No. Not on a resolution, you don't have to.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. All right. Item number six, Resolution Twenty Twenty-Two dash R dash O-two. Ms. Atkins?
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept the terms of, pay matching funds for and accept as revenue a grant from the West Virginia Department of Economic Development Gig Ready Incentive Program.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, a motion from Ms. Rumbaugh and a second from Mr. Bowen. Mr. Dennison?
Good evening. Corey Dennison, ARPA Project Manager. The state of West Virginia, through the Office of Economic Development, has created the Gig Ready Grant Program. This program is using ARPA money the state of West Virginia received from the federal legislation to provide grants to help cities and counties expand high-speed internet around the state. This is a statewide grant, and they will be awarding a total of forty-five million for projects. The City of Huntington will be requesting four-point-five million for fiber projects across our city. The Gig Ready Grant requires a one-to-one match from the City of Huntington, and that is what we are requesting today from City Council. If we are to receive the state grant, the city is eligible to use ARPA funds to cover the one-to-one match and intends to do so. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Dennison?
I have one. Are we on firm footing financially to be able to afford this?
Yes, because we can use ARPA funds for the match.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, do you have a question? Mr. Dennison, do you anticipate using the four, the full four-point-five-million-dollar amount of the grant?
It all depends on what we are going to get from the state, obviously. If we were to receive the full amount within nine million dollars, we would be able to lay the fiber backbone for the majority of the city, and we would intend to do that, I believe, at this point.
Okay, so it's up to four-point-five million, basically? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Dennison?
I would move for approval of it.
Well, let me get a committee report real quick. Admin and Finance?
Administration and Finance Committee did meet on this and moves to full council a favorable recommendation.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public on this item? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Item number seven, Resolution Twenty Twenty-Two dash R dash O-five. Ms. Atkins?
A resolution of council concerning the work stoppage at Special Medals.
Madam Chairman, can we read the, have the whole resolution read, please?
Ms. Atkins, do you have it in front of you? You can read it for us.
Yes, ma'am. Be it hereby resolved by the Council of the City of Huntington, West Virginia, Cabell and Wayne Counties, that this council does hereby wish to express its sincere desire that the two parties, management and workers, involved in the work stoppage at Special Medals, will come together and settle the current impasse. It is our hope that the workers will receive a contract offer which allows them to recoup some of the losses they have suffered, and that will also allow this iconic tri-state industry to continue its profitable operation far into the future. Our city and our region are suffering due to this work stoppage.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Jones and a second by Councilman Bailey. Being that this is a council resolution, Mr. Jones, would you like to give us a quick?
Well, I just feel like that the city needs to come out, the council needs to come out and say that this is something that needs to happen. We've gone four months waiting for this to be settled. I'm not going to go into the particulars of what one side or the other has been arguing about. It's not my place to do that. It's really not our place to do that. But we can certainly put a resolution forward saying that we wish that this would come to a settlement, because there's a lot of people that work at Special Medals that live within our city, and they are families being put in financial difficulties. They are our friends. They are our relatives. They are family members. I think it's time for us to say something about it.
Madam Chair, before there is further discussion or consideration, I need to abstain from any such discussion. Special Medals is a client of my law firm, not necessarily with respect to the strike, but in a number of other matters right now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions from council?
Madam Chairman, I would echo Councilman Jones's remarks.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, point of privilege. While I do respect the grit and determination that Councilman Jones has put forward in this, and I have personal connections to those on, you know, one side or the other of this, this work stoppage, I do also want to echo something that he has said, that it is, in fact, not our place, as far as I'm concerned and can see it. Special Medals in and of itself is outside of the limits of the City of Huntington. That is a gross misstep of what I believe to be our span. We can all wish them well. Nothing personal, however, you know, when I look at something like this, what sort of precedence does this, you know, sort of set for other businesses to come to Huntington or other employees with disputes of their employment coming to Huntington and expecting that we step in? I don't think that it is our place to do so.
Madam Chair, I have a comment?
Yes.
It's interesting that corporations have been legally considered, they're people, by rules and definitions. And it's our job as council folk to represent people. So we should be able to hold corporations accountable to the same level of respect towards one another that we hold our constituents and neighbors and families to. As such, I think that this is a fantastic resolution for our local governance of Huntington, West Virginia, America's best community, to recognize that we need to support our community members. I represent constituents. I'm an individual, but I'm only here because people said they wanted me to stand up and speak for them. So our neighbors need us to stand up and speak for them. And the management, all the way up to Buffett and everybody in between, need to hear us speak for them. The people are suffering. There isn't a situation, as far as any, that I'm aware of or anybody else that I know of is aware of, that if this strike and the contract that the workers are asking for is going to put Special Medals out of business. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about fair, equitable wages, or even just continuing the contract that they had before, as opposed to making it worse.
Madam Chair, I totally...
Personal privilege, I'm not finished.
I'm sorry, darling.
So ultimately, I think that it is our role to speak up for our constituents as council members, as representatives of our individual districts and neighborhoods, and to speak for the people. What else are we going to do with our time? We're just going to be quiet? I think I've said it before, are we going to be neutral like Switzerland, or are we going to be Huntington, West Virginia, America's best community? That's what I hope that we can do, and we can do that by supporting our neighbors. Yes, we want Special Medals to continue. We want them to be profitable, and coming to the table and giving a fair and equitable contract will not break their back. But the workers' backs are breaking. Let's lift them up and support them. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Madam Chair, I totally agree with the comments that have been said. My husband worked for Special Medals for forty-four years. I know how it is to go through being laid off. I know how it is to spend all of your money trying to survive, because back forty years ago, you didn't even get a check once you were on strike. I don't know what's going on now. But my issue is that I would like to amend the resolution. I totally agree with Councilman Jones in his heart and standing up for the people. Yes, you are right. People did vote for us. But when you ask someone for their opinion, you're giving your opinion. You don't necessarily speaking for the people. So when you asked me my opinion about the wording, the concept, I totally agree with. I'm just not too crazy about all the wording. So I'm asking for amendment.
Ms. Johnson, would you like to?
I did.
Should she read her amendments?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I did not want to change anything that Mr. Jones said at all. I wanted to take a couple sentences out, which it is our hope that the workers will receive a contract. I wanted offers to allow to recoup some of the losses and suffer. I wanted that out. And I wanted it to say, it is our hope that the workers will receive a contract that will allow the iconic tri-state institute to continue profitable operations far into the future. That's it. I love Special, Special Medals has been good to us, my husband and I. He's worked hard for the last one job for forty-four years. So I do, I pray, I do what I can to help. But I think when we are not allowed and we feel that we have been muffled, everybody has an opinion. Everybody has one. But the truth of the matter is, we have people that are not working. We have people, families that are suffering, as so was stated by Councilman Rumbaugh. I totally agree with you, but I just don't like the wording. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, hold up, Mr. Jones, hold up just a second.
Okay.
I think I need to see if she, Scott, sorry. Does she need to help me out here?
She needs to move to amend.
Okay.
And then it'll be a second before you discuss.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Jones?
Then we have a roll call vote.
Then we will have, if she makes a motion, if it's second, then we will have a discussion.
Point of privilege. I need to know what the amendment is, okay? I'd like for it to go over here.
So let's have Teresa read it as a motion. Teresa, if you want to say, I move that we strike X from the original. Okay?
Madam Chair, I move that we strike from the original. Offers which allows to recoup some of the losses they have suffered. Omit that, and our city and region are suffering due to the work stoppage. And I wanted to say, it is our hope that the workers will receive the contract that will allow the iconic tri-state, excuse me, to continue to profit, profitable operations far into the future.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. Unfortunately, without a second, the amendment, oh, yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Have a second, we'll make sure you clarify the amendment.
Okay.
There's just a strike, there's no addition in the last?
No, no addition at all.
Okay, and you're taking out the second sentence also, the last?
Yes, our city and region will suffer due to the work stoppage.
Okay. So I'll make sure you clarify there's no addition.
No problem.
Okay. No additional language, we're simply striking the words that she mentioned.
Could we have the amended version read back by the clerk, please?
Okay.
Ms. Atkins, can you?
Need a paper.
Or do you need a copy from?
I think I have it here.
Okay.
All right. Be it hereby resolved by the Council of the City of Huntington, West Virginia, Cabell and Wayne Counties, that this council does hereby wish to express its sincere desire that the two parties, management and workers, involved in the work stoppage of Special Medals, will come together and settle the current impasse. It is our hope that the workers will receive a contract that will also allow this iconic tri-state industry to continue its profitable operation far into the future.
All right, that is the motion on the table. Since we have no second, the motion to amend does not carry.
Dies for a lack of seconds.
Dies for a lack of seconds. Okay. So we're back to the original, and we discuss the original. Does anyone have any further questions?
I have a comment, Madam Chair.
Chairman, or Councilman Shockley, sorry.
That's okay. You know, with this resolution, I know similar to it came before me when I was chair. I'd spoke with Councilman Jones this week. With the respect that I have for Councilman Jones and the heart and the passion that he has for this, I felt that I owed him a phone call to discuss it. While other members of council up to this point have made valid points in their discussion, I have to stick to my guns and what I believe. Yes, everyone in this room, counsel or not, wants to see Special Medals and the union resolve, go back to normal. Who doesn't? Okay? Bringing... I'm trying to stay on point and not go sideways. But the fact of the matter is, this resolution is in nothing but good spirit. Okay? At the end of the day, is it really going to affect anything that the union or Special Medals is thinking are they going to do? Probably not. Okay? The time is spent putting these resolutions together over the last couple months is taking away from doing good business and issues for the city that we could dedicate our time to and our constituents. I support an end to this thing. I hope, I hope everyone goes back to normal, and it's a thing that you talk about at the dinner table that happened in the past. But as far as city council business is concerned, me being here, I mean, this is a, not a city council matter, in my personal opinion. It's between a private company, a union, and a labor dispute. Now, these are our constituents, I agree. Again, I support that they go back to work. Does it need to be on the agenda? No. I think it is something that individually could be stated in good and welfare for each city council representative to express their concerns, and I stick by that. And for that reason only, is the only reason that I will not support it, because I don't think that it needs to be on the agenda, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Councilman Bailey?
If you'll think back about this country, you'll find out who made it strong. It's men and women of the unions. You know, they worked hard. You know, we've got a great country. We've got a good workforce. And these men and women, they deserve anything this council can do for them. Now, I'm going to vote for it a hundred percent to help them, and I wished I could help them some other way. Of course, I belong to a union myself and still belong to it and still pay dues to a union, but I'm going to vote for this, and I'm going to ask you for a roll call vote. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Jackson?
I would just like to say, excuse me, when I, to me, words mean a lot, and the message means a lot. When I read this, the one part that I see here where it says, "It is our hope that the workers will receive," that's, that's not a strong word. That's not, that's not like a demand or a threat. I, we all hope for things. I wish the best for everybody to come together for our community. So when we just say, as a city council, as a group, we hope that they can come together and be able to live a good life, is not, to me, it doesn't seem like it's not too much to ask. We're not taking sides. I don't want to alienate Special Medals. Obviously, we need them to provide these jobs, but all we're saying is that we want the people to come together and we're willing to support the process. People coming together, going in a room, locking the door, we're not going to come out of here until we have a good deal on the table for both of us. And I, I don't, I just, me personally, I don't think that's too much to ask. I don't know if it's our job or not to do that, but like Tia mentioned, people are people. We all people. We're not trying to run them out of business. We're not trying to run them out of town. We're not telling them, we're going to shut you down. I mean, so it's not like we're threatening the company. We just hope that you can work it out. And I just don't think that's a lot to ask, so that's kind of my opinion on that.
All right. Let's move this forward. Anyone from the public on this item? All right, Mr. Bailey had requests. Oh, okay, sorry. Would you like to come up to the podium, please? Ms. Atkins, do I have him state, just like in Good Welfare, name and? Name and address, please?
Okay. David Maynard, six fifty-two County Road thirty-one, Chesapeake, Ohio.
Welcome.
I'm on the negotiating committee for Special Medals. First thing I want to say is I agree a hundred percent with Ms. Rumbaugh and Ms. Johnson. You know, the four-hundred-and-fifty-some people that are out of work, they're not just struggling, it's causing the city to struggle. We're not spending money. We're not going out to eat. We're not going to the movies. We're not shopping. It's costing the city money. And what you touched on, we've told them countless times at the table, we would continue to work under our contract. We're not asking for millions of dollars and all this free stuff. We're just asking to stay on a plateau where we're at. They're wanting to take away. So that's where we're at with that. And then, for the gentlemen that don't agree with it or don't want to help us, then if it's not the city's problem, then why does the city police come to their aid when the company calls over the strikers? You know, we're getting out of line. So either get the city involved or keep them out of it, is what I ask. So that's it.
Thank you. All right. All right, Mr. Bailey has requested a roll. Is that all in line with what we can do? Does I need a second on that or for anything? It's just a request? All right. Can request a roll? Okay, okay, thank you. Learning all kinds of new stuff tonight. All right, Ms. Atkins, can you go ahead and do a roll call on this one? Please?
We're voting on the resolution by Mr. Jones, right?
Right, the original, the original wording, yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Rumbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Shockley?
No.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Ms. Walling?
I abstain.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Ms. Mount?
Yes. The resolution passes. All right, for Good and Welfare, just in the spirit of parliamentary procedure and to keep the quorum, just remind everyone that all statements from the public are to be directed to the chair. Speaking time is limited to five minutes, although we don't have anyone signed up to speak. Just a reminder, the items discussed previously on the agenda cannot be discussed during Good and Welfare, and I just want to remind everyone that if there are any speakers, that if there's any engagement, a waiver of the rules must be done first. I don't have anyone from the public to speak listed, so we'll go ahead and move to our council members. Mr. Jackson?
I'm just glad to be here with all you wonderful people.
Glad you're here. Mr. Bailey?
Yes, ma'am. I had a citizen to send me a check made out to the City of Huntington, and they want this money to go to fix the potholes. This citizen is the commander of the American Legion on Sixth Avenue, and it is Shannon Harshberger. And he says each year he sends a check to the City of Huntington to try to help with the repair of the potholes. So I give this to the clerk to give to the finance department.
That's very sweet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Walling?
Two things. First of all, I'd like to thank Brian Chambers for organizing the day of service that we had earlier this month. It was my pleasure to volunteer at the food bank with Mr. Dennison and to get to know some of the city employees that I had not gotten to meet yet. So thank you, I think that's a wonderful program, and I look forward to another day of service soon. And then, second, I was very pleased to hear that there are two new police officers joining the Huntington Police Department. Right now, the department is offering some really awesome incentives, signing bonuses, and I've seen Mr. Bowen share it on social media. It's definitely posted on the city's Facebook page as well. And I would strongly encourage anyone who has any interest at all in a career in law enforcement to consider applying for one of those positions.
Thank you. Mr. Shockley?
Council, council, I'm sorry. Until she said that, I just wanted to speak on the food bank also, that me and Chief Raiders were on the same team, and I think we had the most boxes.
Oh, so you just want to brag? So you just want to brag. You just want to brag during Good and Welfare. I get it.
We were shorthanded. We were shorthanded, and we had to start late.
Mr. Anderson?
Just one comment for the mayor. We, I think they're working on the budget. We should see it here soon. Sir, would you make sure Public Works is 100% staffed? Excellent, excellent, excellent.
Ms. Johnson?
I just want to say thank you to everyone that showed up at AD Lewis for our welcoming, our new police chief. I thought the turnout was excellent. Thank you all, Mayor, especially, I know you weren't feeling good, so your support means a lot. Our councilmen that showed up, Doron and Mr. Bob are calling, and I appreciate that. I want you to know that the community, they notice. They take notice of that. So I don't take that, as I said in the meeting, I don't take that for granted, but I appreciate you, and thank you, Fairfield.
Thank you. Mr. Bowen?
Well, I did have two things, but now I have a third since we're bringing up the food pantry. Councilman Jackson, I had the distinct pleasure of working with the firefighters that won last year, and I believe we are now at two time, or well, I guess, I'm going to call "we" because I'm going to jump in with them. Pretty sure they were moving boxes faster than, I mean, I think we might have forgotten to fill a couple of them, but they were pushing boxes. I mean, it was, it was quick. By the time we left there, the gentleman that were working with us said that they were ready to go home and take a nap, and they don't really want to see us back anytime soon. But they were very thankful for the amount of work that we were able to kind of workload for them. Second thing, I'd like to extend a hearty thank you to Chief Calder. He and I have had conversations for concerns about police presence in the west end of town and Westmoreland, and sir, I want to make, I want to make sure you're aware, we are seeing the uptick in presence, and we certainly thank you for that. I've gotten calls from neighbors that, "Hey, I don't know what they're doing down here, but they're down here." I said, "Well, that's what you wanted. They're here, and we're happy to see that." Lastly, I have the pleasure to announce that some local groups in Westmoreland have gotten together. The Wayne County Prevention Coalition, as well as the Wayne County Students Against Destructive Decisions, have partnered up with Colefield there at the West Edge Facility, and they will be doing their first spring sweetheart dance. The intention of some of the community groups there is to bring back the olden days and get the community back together and give them a place. Now that we have a giant warehouse that's suitable for those sort of events, for anyone wishing to come down, it is Saturday, February the 12th. It'll be 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at 1040 Vernon Street. Again, that is Wayne County Prevention Coalition and the Wayne County Students Against Destructive Decisions, and we are, or they are, taking as much community support. Anybody wants to get involved with them, they'd love to have some help.
Thank you. Ms. Rumball?
Yes. I had a great meeting with Hank Dial, city manager, and Scott Limley, the innovation director, a week or so ago, about discussing the feasibility of a municipal childcare program. A survey was released several months ago, back in the fall, where we polled municipal employees to find out the childcare needs. And from that conversation, an awareness campaign about the essential worker subsidy available for essential workers that are municipal employees should be going out this week. In it, you'll find some municipal staff, and municipal staff will find attachments of information about how they can apply for their essential worker subsidy, which will help them with childcare costs. What's interesting is that this is not just information for municipal staff, but it also applies to all residents within Cabell County and beyond. If you are deemed an essential worker, there is still an essential worker childcare subsidy program that you can apply for. For information about it, please go to the Link Childcare Resource and Referral website for information about applying. Please note that the Link office is still working remotely due to the pandemic, so the best way to reach them is not necessarily through a phone call and leaving a voicemail. It is through emailing one of the agents, and you'll find contact information for that on their website, and that's what I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I'd like to thank the mayor for sending up someone from code enforcement to our High Lawn Association meeting. I'd also like to thank the chief of police for showing up there, sir. Thank you very much. I applaud you for your attempts to get around to all the neighborhood agency, association meetings and be there as a face for our law enforcement. And I'd like to say, along those lines, what a great country we live in. We took a vote tonight with no fear or favor from anyone and voiced our opinions. We do it every time we meet in this country of ours. We've got people willing to go out and do their work and their jobs without any fear from somebody retaliating against them through legal methods that are not something that we have agreed to, okay, in this country. This is the greatest country on earth, and we have our faults, but this country here is the one that everybody else looks to all over this world for the way to conduct their business. Make no mistake about it. And that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Sweeney?
I'd also like to thank Chief Calder for the increased presence of the police department in our district, too. It's much appreciated.
Wonderful, thank you. I don't have anything. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Take a adjourn.